All right, I'd like to call the Deer Grove Village Board of Trustees to order on Monday, December 19th. It's six thirty on my watch. We are holding this as both a hybrid meeting, meaning we are in the room at Village Hall, and we are on Zoom. So there is a Zoom link at the top of the agenda, as well as an audio call in number two if you choose to do so. With that, we have a quorum. The agenda was properly posted, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next up, item four is public appearance. Public's opportunity to speak. Please, if you are going to speak, we would just ask that you share your name, your address, your municipality, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes, in case we have a number of folks who would like to speak, and that will capture it for the public record. So with that, I'll pause. If anybody would like to raise their hand, please do so. That'll be the only silence for tonight. Moving on, then. We're gonna, because we have an officer on duty, and if it's okay with the board, I'd like to move up the swearing-in of the K-9 Officer Nash, up after we do our discuss and consider meeting minutes. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So next, we have discuss and consider meeting minutes from December 5th. Any questions, comments, edits in regards to the meeting minutes, or motion for consideration?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
All right, thank you, Heidi. Thank you, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
All right.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next, then, we'll move to the swearing-in of Officer Nash.
I, K-9 Officer Nash, who has been appointed to the office of full-time police officer with the Village of Cottage Grove, swear that I will enforce state laws and ordinance of the village, and support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Wisconsin. I agree to faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
All right, so this is his badge? And it says, Officer, Police Officer, and it says, "Nash." So, congratulations. Yep. Thank you. Next, then, we have unfinished business. Set of inner regarding Deer Grove EMS. Rick?
Yeah, I'll just give a few quick comments. So, obviously, we approved an agreement, I think about a month ago. After that, the Village of Deerfield and Town of Cottage Grove had some suggested edits. I believe we previously talked about all the edits that they wanted to make at our last meeting. This is reflecting those changes. They're all very minor from what was previously approved. The current agreement does expire after December 31st, so this would be a new agreement and continue for 10 years, making sure that the EMS district continues past that January 1st date.
All right. Thanks, Rick. Just a quick comment, I'd like to thank Board members, Brittany and Sarah. About nine months or so ago. Is here somewhere, hidden in the corner. Thank you, Chief, for your work, and again, for the work of this board, as well as staff, to make this happen. Any questions, comments from Board members? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the EMS agreement and included performance metrics as presented. Second?
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Brittany. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Can I give it to me so I can sign it right away? You want it?
Sure.
It's got the updated cover on it, too. I would like to also say thank you to the board for all the work that you guys did on our behalf as well. I know it was a long road, and lots of meetings, and times spent away from your family on our behalf, so we appreciate your work as well.
I'm assuming you can carry this right to the town.
I'll stand in the middle of the room there, too.
Thank you. Good night. All right, then, next, we'll move on to new business. First up is to an interview for the open village trustee position with Terry and Vincent. Either or both of them here, I'm assuming, right? There's two mics up there waiting for you guys to join us.
Well, yeah, please.
Oh, yes. We're gonna interview our trusted candidates. Sorry. And we'll start off with people first.
Test, test.
All right, the sheet I just gave, we're just determined, because we're gonna do this in a panel-style questioning, where we alternate questions between the two candidates, and that's what they just elected, so that's what you were doing there. It wasn't a test.
All right. Well, thank you for being here tonight. I'll start off with our first question. So please provide a bit of your background, and why did you choose to submit a letter of interest for the vacant trustee position? And so we started with A-B. You could take a moment to introduce yourself, please. Thank you. There is a switch on your microphone, just one other technical thing, so then, anyone up here as well?
Okay. Hi, Vince Whittick. Obviously, sent a letter in to show interest to join this board. My background, starting out right out of high school, military, did that for 12 years, Iraq and Afghanistan War veteran. When I left the service after 12 years, I joined the private sector as a manager in a production environment with Scholastic Book Fair. If any of you have kids, you probably know exactly what that is. Went on in varying degrees of management, both in operations, manufacturing, IT, which is where I am now. I work for WPS, I'm a Vice President of IT for WPS, Health Solutions in Madison. I have a bachelor's degree in organizational administration from the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh. I have an MBA from UW-Madison. I've got two kids and a wife. We've lived in Cottage Grove for a little over seven years. And one of the reasons I wanted to join this board was to contribute to the community, something I've always believed in, and something I thought my skill set would lend itself well to, in building consensus and so forth.
Great, thank you, and Terry?
Okay. My name is Terry Benzo. I've, my wife and I have lived in Cottage Grove for almost three years now. We're originally from northeast Iowa, Decora, Winneshie County, which is pretty much a miniature Dane County, Madison, in all practical purposes. When I was out in Iowa, I served on the city council, served about three terms on there. Worked in, managed county government for 20 years, and enjoyed public service. And managed a county government department that was a very unusual one. It was, I was a waste reduction promoter, and covered all northeast Iowa, southeast Minnesota. And I did cross the river over into Wisconsin, and covered a couple counties over here. So was very successful at it. Won the top awards in the field for that. And my county department was considered the model of efficiency for government in the state of Iowa. And I was basically the clearinghouse for anything you wanted to get rid of, you had to call me. So I was involved in a lot of policy decisions, policymaking throughout the years. In hindsight, I might have wanted to put myself on track to be the head of the Iowa DNR, but we decided to relocate out here. We were looking for some more diversity. Diversity is kind of our thing. My wife is in family practice medicine, and she needed a little more diversity than what was available out there. And we looked all over the country, where we're gonna move to, took it a time, many years, and came down to Ottawa, Ontario, Apple Hill, North Carolina, and Cottage Grove. But I knew Cottage Grove well. This is kind of where the ancestral home is. But I enjoy public services, pretty much life I really know anymore. I like conflict resolution. I like helping out different departments. Little bit better. But I can identify with the different departments quite well. And for the last couple summers, I've done some seasonal work for Cottage Grove, so I think I'm well acquainted with every weed in this village, so, and every pothole, so. It's a great community, got some interesting growth happening here, a lot of potential, so.
Great, thank you. I'll kick it over to our next question. Thank you.
Hi, guys, I'm Chris. First of all, let me say thank you for putting your name out there. I know it's not an easy thing to put yourself forward like that, so I appreciate it. What are your expectations for the role of village trustee in Cottage Grove? Starting with.
My expectations is, and it's like, I work right now in the schools, I'm a student sub for Marshall. I've also done stuff in Cottage Grove, too. And it's like I tell my students that this isn't my first barbecue. And I like hearing public opinion. My ear's been to the pavement for 20-some years. I basically ran a PR machine, so I like hearing what the public has to say. And I love conflict resolution, crisis management, and I like putting out fires every day. And I kind of thrive on chaos, and whatever can be thrown at me, so. But my expectation is to, if I'm dealing with a general public or taxpayer, explain things in terms, and it's understood that they will pass on to their neighbor, and describe it in the same way, so. Maybe put to rest any misconceptions.
Would you mind reading the question one more time, just so?
What are your expectations for the role of village trustee in Cottage Grove?
Sure, okay. Assuming that we have a strategy for the city, whether that's business growth, services to the public, et cetera, I think our role is to execute the items necessary to drive down the path of achieving the strategic goals of the village. I expect I'll probably be interacting with many taxpayers and citizens of the community, collaborating with you folks, and helping build consensus on things that we think need to be done, and listen to the people that put us here. Short end.
Thank you.
All right. I'm Sarah. Nice to meet you. Thanks for coming. My question is related to time, so sometimes these board meetings can be long. We've been known to go for four and a half hours on our meeting nights, and then we have committees, and so oftentimes, in one week, there might be two meetings that you would need to attend as part of the time commitment. And I'm just wondering how that fits into your expectations of what you were thinking you would need to dedicate to time for this commitment?
Assuming it's not more than about 20 hours a week, I think that fits within my expectations. When I was doing my MBA at the university in town here, that's what I did, and it was fine. My wife goes to bed early anyway, so I spent a lot of time at night reading. But yeah, if it's, I'm gonna say 20 hours or less, I'm probably okay with that.
I'm well acquainted with that kind of environment. One of my responsibilities when I did manage a county department, I also had to direct the meetings, and provide all the documentation, the official minutes, and did that for 20-some years, so I'm well acquainted with it.
What do you think is going well in the village, and what do you think we need to work on?
There's a lot of things going well here. That's one of the reasons we moved here. And you've got some really good employees here, really good departments, and I like the way the parks are going. I think what you're doing at Bakken Park is fantastic. I like the future of the bike trails, and that is gonna be huge. You've got a lot of people want to come here. You've got a growth rate that is pretty healthy, almost dangerously healthy, you know? It's so big. So that's one of the good things. You've got a nice diversity going on here, and that's another thing that I think is excellent. Things are well-kept, and when your first impressions, I love making public facilities look good, because you only got one time to make the first impression. And when you come into the village, you know, you don't see junk cars sitting around there. So, anyhow, just a lot of people that get it. And hard to describe when you see people that get it, but they're, so. As far as things that are not going well, I can't really say that there is anything that's really truly bad, but I said just be careful of a growth rate that gets a little bit wild, because it's hard to stay ahead of things. And there's really no crystal ball out there you can look into and predict the future and get it right every time. And there's a lot of armchair quarterbacks out there, and if you don't get it right, you know you're gonna hear about it, right? So, you know, that's a thing to watch for. And as far as, one big thing of mine, I bought a lot of equipment through the years, built sewer plants and things like that, but watch your equipment. Stay on top of operating efficiency. Always put that in front, and don't skimp. Get good stuff, and get the government rate.
Terry, you should push your microphone a little bit further back. Okay. Okay.
For me, the things I think are going well, Sam is Terry, a lot. I'd like to see some diversity in housing that we've come across here over the last few years, making sure that stays on target with where the plan is for the community. I've enjoyed seeing the businesses come to town, businesses people use, they're thriving, like Oakstone, Downrins. We've got, obviously, Duncan coming in, Grace just opened. There's a lot of really good things happening on the business side. I think the parks, to your point, Bakken Park is incredible. I'm renting out the rugby house here for a softball party for my kids. Just the parking that's increased over there, making room for everything that's going to be and is happening over there, I think it's fantastic. I've seen an increased police presence over the last seven years. I mean, I can remember when I moved here, I don't think I saw a cop once a week, maybe. Now I've had them coming up, if I leave my garage door open and it's 10 o'clock, I have somebody knocking on my door saying, "Hey, did you know your garage door is open?" And it's a police officer. It's like, you don't get that in a lot of places. So I think just, I could keep going, but just a lot of really good things happening. Like I said, business, housing, and police. You know, in terms of things not so good, it's really tough to come up with one. You know, I hate blowing leaves and taking them to the, taking them to the thing over there. That's about 80 hours of my life every year that I didn't wish, I wish I didn't have to do, but, yeah, overall, I think the community's heading in the right direction. And to your point, you know, we have to be careful on growth, but if we have a plan, a strategy to get where we want to be, then that's, we're executing that, then we're gonna be okay.
How do you want Cottage Grove to look in 10 years?
That's a tough one. I love the way Cottage Grove looks now, but I understand that, you know, you evolve or you die, right? And so, I mean, I fully expect between the middle school and the library down on Monona Grove, on Cottage Grove Road down there by, in Monona, that's gonna just be city at some point. There's not going to be open fields that you see today out there, and I think that's okay. Those communities are connected, the schools are connected, and so that's where I kind of see the city growing. And obviously, we've got some districts over off of N there with some open land, maybe there's an opportunity for more business to come in over there. I don't know a ton about the, you know, what we're doing in terms of attracting businesses. I know Amazon has talked about coming. I don't know if that's a done deal or not, but obviously, that's gonna bring jobs, revenue to the businesses in this city, so.
What I see Cottage Grove in 10 years is an enhancement of what you already have. Got a good, we've got a good thing going here. Of course, it'll be bigger. I think the population's gonna be substantially more. Maybe it's up around 15,000, maybe it's 20,000. It's hard to predict. But I see a little more diversity happening here. I see it reputation-wise getting to be more well-known. I don't know how much larger a footprint you're gonna be able to do here with the village. Sooner or later, you kind of, you know, hit a boundary that's not gonna move. But I see an interesting thing developing with the school out there, and I don't know what the answer is there. There's so much talk on that out there. I know you're really looking forward to having a library. One of my daughters has got a master's from Rutgers of Library Science. She knows all about this. And she just, like, would love to design a library from the ground up, a whole entire program. And whenever I talk with her, she just jaws nonstop about it. I see something very interesting, and it's a huge opportunity to do something really, really cool with that, that maybe somebody's never done before. So I see that out there. But overall, just a great place to live, and I think, and the businesses will follow, if it's a great place to live.
Next, we have, each village board member brings a set of priorities to the table each year that helps staff set goals and objectives for the upcoming year. What are some priorities you would like to see emphasized for the remainder of this term?
So I've looked at the priorities and how you guys kind of list, you know, you get like 20 points, right? And you get to assign a point value to a priority. And I don't recall all of the priorities on the list, but I saw fiscal responsibility as one, I saw a library, I saw the leaf blower, I saw, I think you want to replace this building, maybe. So I would say whatever is most impactful is what I would prioritize. So when I solve problems and I have to spend money, I look at what's going to make an impact, right? And so that's what I would, without giving you a specific example, I would say, you know, a consensus on what is the most impactful money, or the most impactful thing we do in good stewardship of the money that we are, you know, entrusted to spend. So if that's a library, it's a library. Understanding the impact, how do you know what that is? Well, through statistical analysis sometimes, talking to the community, what's important to them, what has an ROI, what saves people time? Like, I think of myself, and what's important to me may not be important to everyone, but I think to myself, what's important to me is my time, right? And so is there something on this list that is going to save members of the community, the taxpayers at large, time in their day, whatever that means to them? Is it, you know, public transportation, is it, you know, take, whatever the situation is, it's gotta be impactful, and it's gotta be the right way to spend money.
I think one of the, at the forefront of things as far as priorities, you always want to, and efficient use of your tax dollars, of course. That applies whether it's with public safety, or public works, or parking wreck, or what have you. But I would think one priority to always keep in front of things is, is if you build new stuff, and improve, and enhance, and expand, always be cognizant, you gotta maintain this thing. Because if you build something, and you can't take care of it, you know, that's probably not a good thing. And it's hard to, it's hard, it's easy to picture something new, and you see the blueprints and all of that, but it's hard to look at what it's gonna take to keep the thing good from here on out. And I look at some of the park growth out there, and it's huge. I'm like, wow, that's a lot of mowing. That's a lot of, that's a lot of taking care of. How do you do this with the same amount of people? What's out there, equipment-wise, that can do this? And, you know, that's one of the priorities there. The other priority, too, is always keep your village looking clean, and I think I said in one of the previous questions. When you come into the village off of 94, or whatever, you want to see garbage laying around in the streets? See it in, go up and park at Park and Ride, and thing looks like a second coming of a landfill? No. That doesn't give a good impression when people come in, and always keep that in front. You only got one opportunity, so.
My turn. Great. Yeah, read this?
Yep, okay. Forgot how to read. Thank you again, gentlemen, for coming tonight. So I get back-to-back questions here. So, in your opinion, what community services are most beneficial to the growing community, and what services would you like to see expanded to better serve the needs of our growing
Well, as far as public safety, it, your number of officers has got to follow your population to some extent. And I haven't had a whole lot of encounters with the police force, but the encounter And I haven't had a whole lot of encounters with the police force, but the encounter I did have was exceptional. I lost dog. First thing, the officer asked me, how you guys holding up? Whoa, what a question. That was awesome. So obviously, the officer got it. I wish I could remember his name. But that is something out there. Can you rephrase the question again?
I guess, from a community service, what's working and what would you like to see expanded?
As far as expanded, obviously, as you get more streets and things like that, you're going to have to do some things with public works. You've got a lot of things going in the park direction right now. That expansion's already in there. I'd like to see a little more development, you know, with the housing divisions out there. And a lot of them are well underway. They may slow down a little bit with the interest rates doing what they're doing right now. But expand offerings to the public that will keep them interested in staying in the community, whatever that may be, whether it's a library or a community center or a hybrid or something like that. That's something to keep out there. But take your time on making the decision of it. Sometimes things don't have to go instant decision. Well thought out ones work best for the long haul.
Community services that are going well and things that we can improve upon? So when I think of things that are going well, it's the things I never have to think about, right? And so, I've never had a power outage that's lasted more than five minutes at my house. I've never had snow that hasn't been removed from my street the day it snowed. I'm never worried if a fire hydrant's going to work. So all of the things, infrastructure-wise, I think have gone really well. And you've seen it, I mean, even last summer especially, with some of these roads that were torn up and everything. Yeah, it's ugly, but you have to do it, you have to keep up with it. And so, I think from an infrastructure perspective, it's going really well. Obviously, as Terry mentioned, the police presence, I mentioned it before, doing a great job. We have an EMS department, so in terms of public safety, we've got everything we need. And it sounds like it needs to be expanded a little bit on the police side. Not well. Again, I'm very happy with this community. It's really hard for me to think of anything that I'm just like, geez, I wish they would do this or wish they would do that. The parks are in good shape. You know, the splash pad was a really nice investment, I think, for younger families. But in terms of things that I'm not happy with, it's just really hard. I really have to talk to people and see what they're saying because I'm not fine with much of them.
Second question. One priority has a heightened interest is a library for the community. In your opinion, how important is this service for our community?
Okay. Well, like I said, I've got a daughter that's very interested in this and this is her thing. And the library that, you just mentioned the word library to the vast majority of people, what goes through your head? Looking in the window and there's a stack of books. A library of the future, one built in 2022 or '23 or what have you, doesn't look like that. It's more of a community resource center, maybe often coupled with a community center. So it's, something is needed out there. And a lot of communities have a community resource center. There isn't any here. So it's like you were saying, we had to go rent the rugby building. So, but it needs to be something that everybody is welcome to use and can be multi-dimensional, dimensional, can be used for a variety of things. And it's got to be really forward-looking and it's got to be adaptable too. So, but you know, you can't build the Taj Mahal because you don't have, you know, unlimited funds. It's got to be something that works. And that's a tricky thing to do, you only got one time to build it, one opportunity. But build it adaptable and it'll go over good. It will, it'll go over good. But the public really needs to have it explained to them because we've all heard the keyboard warriors out there and read what they got to say. So, okay.
So it's interesting you talk about a community center because that was actually on my mind when I've heard about the library too. And in some ways, asking an IT guy what he thinks about libraries is probably like a loaded question because technology, I don't think of a library in a traditional sense of a library, right, stacked with books. I think of a library as a place with computers, with collaboration, with rooms that, you know, if I've got a kid in high school and they want to meet with their peers to work on a project or, you know, any number, I see it more as a community gathering place that has books also. And I think marketing a library is harder when you just call it a library. And maybe it doesn't have the understanding of the community that a different type of space might. I'm not opposed to a library, but I think it's got to have the right use. It's got to be more than just a place to go check out books.
All right, next up is myself. What makes you the candidate that we should select?
I guess it's me. I guess, you know, I think I've got good experience, maybe not so much in the local government, but I do have quite a lot of experience in managing eight-figure budgets, building consensus, allocating resources. I've got a lot of friends, so I work with the public in that way. But overall, I'm passionate about community. And I think I could play a role on this board. That would be complimentary to all of you, so.
I think I'd be a good candidate for this because I know what it's like to have 10,000 boss. And that's pretty much all of life I can remember, so. But I also, as far as serving the taxpayers, I know what to advocate for. I know what the employees of the village do. I can step in and do a lot of their jobs. And I have no problem working alongside them. I do that kind of stuff, so. I can identify with it. I've filled those shoes and know what it's like to be in the trenches working, so. Simple answer.
One follow-up question then is, what questions do you have for the board?
I'm sure I'd have a lot of them, but I guess one of the questions, and it'd almost be also if you could answer them individual, is have you ever done this before? And what have you found to be the most interesting or challenging? And I don't know how you'd answer that as a board as a whole. It's more like a question for individuals. I always like seeing somebody that's got into office or whatever the first time and what they see. Because once you've been there a while, you can't see a lot of things. It's kind of like there's too many trees, so you can't see the forest. And I like to, I like to see what someone fresh coming in. So that's a question I have. What was the biggest shock or whatever?
Brittany, you want to, or Chris?
Well, this is, excuse me, this is my first term on the board. I am a local business owner. And in my business, my goal is to serve my community. And I wanted a different way to do that. So I submitted my election forms and I'm on the board. And in my industry, it's very important for emergency services, so I'm also in the EMS commission. And, you know, the library is something that is of interest of mine, but being a business owner has to work. So, you know, there's things that like the community, you have to run the village like a business in a different sense, so.
Thank you, Brittany.
Thanks for the question and for all of your answers earlier. I grew up in community service and volunteered with my mom at every event possible in town growing up. So instilled in me that sense of serving your community from a very young age. And then I studied urban and regional planning in college. So that also sparked my interest in development and housing and all the things that we think about here. So those are kind of the two reasons that sort of made me want to put my name on the ballot. And now we can see everything coming together as we see something, an idea just from inception to then see it built in real life, so it's rewarding.
Everybody?
No, we don't have to do everybody.
You're the timekeeper here.
Yeah, no, I think between Heidi and Brittany, they've got two different tenures. So I think it's got, unless you want to, David, if you want to say something, that's fine.
No, I'm good.
Okay. And just as a side note, I started where you guys are at, tried to fill a seat for about six months before an election. So I've experienced what you are going through right now, just as a side note. Same question, any questions for us?
Yeah, there is a few questions about what do you think we're doing well, what do you think we're not doing well? I guess I would ask you the same thing. What your perspective as board members on what we're doing well and what could we work on?
Anybody want to take that? Sarah?
Well, what I think we're doing well, I think you've mentioned a lot of them in your answers. I'm very proud of all of our parks. And I think our financial management, you know, we are having to make some hard decisions. We don't have enough money to do everything we want. So I think we're doing a good job doing our best to listen to our community, be financially responsible with the money we do have and try to figure out a way to get it all done with the money we have. It might take different years, but that's what I'm, I think we're doing well and I think we can work on it. And I think that's what we have to work on these next few years.
Anybody want to jump in or no? All right.
It's up to you guys. Okay.
Vince, Terry, thank you very much. Appreciate you guys putting your names out there and talking to us and sharing your experiences. With that, the board can take action now. The board could table this and think about it or however you want to do it. So I will open it up to the board members.
I'll just, I don't have a suggestion on what we should do, but I wanted to, again, thank both of you. I think your understanding of our community and your desire to serve the residents is very commendable and I appreciate, you know, all of the answers and coming up here interview style. I appreciate that very much. So I guess I don't necessarily have a motion at this moment, I'm kind of taking things in, but so just see if anyone else has something.
This is a discuss and consider. And again, you can table it too if you got to think about it more too.
Yeah, and obviously, as John said, you don't have to make a decision tonight. The board will function, one member down. If you want to take some time to think about the discussion tonight or the answer, that's perfectly fine. So there's not a need to make the appointment tonight if the board doesn't want to. Everybody keeps looking at me, I feel.
No, you're smiling for some reason. I don't know what you've got going on over there, David.
No, I think, I think, so for those that don't know, I met with both Terry and Vince, spent a lot of time with both of them. Again, thank you for the time, thank you for coming tonight. I think in, just to give honest, good, honest, transparent feedback, right? Terry, you've spent a lot of years in public service, you moved to the area recently. I think you bring a wealth of information, a wealth of knowledge and a wealth of experience, right? Vince, I think as a fellow IT guy, I can appreciate your experience. It's hard to not look at the world from an IT perspective, right? And we have to, you know, we have to build consensus, right, when we don't have much if any power, right? And so, I can appreciate that, I think. Vince, you've lived in the area longer than Terry. This is a really tough decision for us. Historically, there's typically been more people who have tossed their hat in the ring. So I think with just the two of you, I think it makes it a little difficult to come up with a decision. Plus, we're all still kind of relatively new at being on the board. You know, our peers down the road, they've done this for, you know, 20-plus years. So this is, I don't want to speak for everybody, but you know, it's kind of hard to talk about you in front of you, right? So it's a little jarring. I mean, I think from my perspective, you know, I think I, granted, I spent some good amount of time with both of you and had a lot of time to think about it. And, you know, Terry, like I said, I think you bring a lot of experience to the table. Vince, you bring a lot of enthusiasm and I want you to stay continued to be involved. But tonight, I would make a motion to appoint Terry to the village trustee position.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it to open it up to discussion.
All right, thank you. All right, then we'll move to discussion.
I'm thinking about this a little bit through the lens of the person that we're replacing and the experience at different levels of government that she brought to the table. So that's, you know, she's also a county board supervisor. So just that breadth of knowledge from different levels of government is definitely one thing that may, you know, factor into decision, although this is a difficult decision that we have in front of us.
Any other discussion?
I also just want to thank you both. I know you've heard that multiple times, but it's not easy to come up there and sit in front of us and then it's not easy for us to talk about you in front of you, as others have mentioned. But, you know, I actually was leaning probably more towards Vince, just given some of the answers struck better, more with me around the diversity of the housing that you referenced and some of the other assets you would bring. So I, both, either of you would be a good choice. So I think that's our struggle is that.
I'll echo that. It's not an easy decision, gentlemen, so I, you know, it's tough.
Any other discussion? All right, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, that might make it easier.
Thank you.
Ballwig? Nay. Murphy?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stoa?
Aye.
Valencia?
Nay.
Williams?
Nay.
So we have a three-three.
That's the problem.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion then that we nominate Vincent Whitig to fill the banquet seat.
I'll second, just to keep moving. Any other discussion? Having heard none, then we'll do a roll call.
Peterson?
Oh, you had to start with me. Aye.
Ballwig?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Stoa? Six aye.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you all for the consideration.
We might call you for a committee.
I was just thinking the same thing.
Okay, good, thank you. Right now.
Right now?
So there is some paperwork that you'll have to fill out, I think, what you'll need, so we can work on that. Yeah.
Yeah, but you're welcome to stay and listen on. All right, next up then is to discuss and consider the development agreement with Supreme Cottage Grove LLC.
Yeah, so basically, this item and the next item are tied together, so the Supreme, you guys have already approved a site plan for them, so this property was sold to Avid two years ago, a year and a half ago, there was a development agreement with Avid to develop the property, there was a municipal revenue obligation or development incentive, plus there was a closing cost credit that was applied to the development, Avid has determined it can no longer develop that property, so Supreme has offered to buy the property and they want to develop it, so to make this work, what they are doing is refunding the village the closing cost credit that was provided when the land was originally sold, and they will not be getting any incentive, basically, it's just made whole, property is going to get developed, assessment guarantee is for $2 million, which is at least slightly lower, and it's farther in the future by a few years, but essentially, the property will still get developed, what was planned was the expansion for Johnson Health Tech. So the first item, the development agreement with Supreme Structures or a subsidiary of just Supreme, is so they can develop the property, and once that is approved, then we can terminate the agreement with Avid, and that basically cleans this all up.
Any questions? All right, discuss and consider then.
I'll make a motion to approve the development agreement with Supreme Cottage Grove LLC as presented.
Second.
All right, motion from Heidi, second from David. Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. And then, leading right into that, what Rick said, next item is the termination of the developers' agreement with Avid Real Estate Cottage Grove.
I'll make a motion to terminate the development agreement with Avid Real Estate Cottage Grove LLC as stated.
All right, second.
Second.
I didn't hear, is that Brittany?
Second, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Just want to make sure I get this for Lisa, she's got better ears than I do. All right, any further discussion? All right, having heard none, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Thanks, Rick. Next up is a calendar question, we have dates for our January board meeting, we're running into a Monday of a holiday, as we do every so often in the calendar.
And it happens both, it happens both meetings in January?
Yes.
With the new year and then Martin Luther King Junior Day. As far as, we have enough going on, I wouldn't suggest canceling either, so we can stay on, we could do both on Tuesday, there might be some conflicts with other committees, but, you know, the board priority if there are other committees that need to be moved or proposed, or canceled, I think that would be preferable, so we can keep the board.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, Lisa, if you have any thoughts on that?
Sure, so to throw out another date, both those following Wednesdays would work as well with the calendars, just to give you options, or make it more confusing.
Why won't the Tuesdays work, the next day, the third and the?
The third, Tuesdays would, but I was just saying that Wednesday's available too. Tuesday would be Public Works, but like Matt said, we could always change that.
Oh, I was listening.
Board members have a preference?
It's the Tuesdays or the Wednesdays, we couldn't do like the ninth and the 23rd?
You mean the Mondays?
Yeah, just do like the second and fourth Mondays.
That wouldn't work for me.
I don't know, it just works with my schedule, damn it. Mondays are just easier for me to get off work, not that I'm a lone boss, but.
So the ninth of January would be CDA, would be the Monday, and the 23rd would be joint fire and NatVig.
Yeah, joint fire, that's a tough one.
All right, I mean, then I'm, Tuesdays or Wednesdays work.
Tuesday or Wednesday is one better than?
It wouldn't matter for me.
Okay.
At six, so it's, I mean, we have rescheduled and other, this happens often when we're the first Tuesday.
Ooh, good call.
If there's a board meeting.
I'll make a motion to schedule the January meetings on January 3rd, Tuesday, January 3rd at 6:30, and Tuesday, January 17th at 6:30 at Village Hall.
I'll second.
Motion seconded then, any further discussion?
Is Public Works the third?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll have to get a, Josh, if you have a suggestion on what night we should make, okay, all right, we'll send out, yeah, JJ and Brian, we can work on getting.
Josh was listening too. He was listening too. And we had floated before too about, you know, these kind of routine conflicts with holidays, Tuesdays are generally more open, we never had, the board never actually truly discussed and considered potentially moving the regular board meeting date, ordinance change, there are a lot of other municipalities that also meet on Mondays, so it's, it can work more efficiently from a consultant availability perspective at times as well, so something to consider, so we don't have to, it's also not that big of a deal to have a few times a year that we have these kind of agenda items to reschedule, but just something to think about.
It keeps us on our toes. All right, any other further discussion, other than coordinating some meetings, rescheduling? All right, having heard none, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we have a couple resolutions, the first one up is to discuss and consider Resolution 2022-2022, that's a lot of twos, regarding the appreciation for the service of Melissa Ratcliffe, who started her tour as a board member in 2018, she both not only represents the village during that time, but then also took on the county level, and then more recently is now fighting for us in the legislature, so she had resigned due to all that going on, but we certainly want to show her appreciation for that, and I don't know if anybody else has any other comments? And thank you, Heidi, for putting this together.
Yeah, I think it's important that we do a formal recognition of those that have served our community, and she did it very well, talking with residents all the time at their doors, so I think that she had a great finger on the pulse of the community, and she'll do well in the legislature, so I'm proud to have her there. I would make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-22 regarding appreciation of service to Melissa Ratcliffe.
Second.
All right, thank you, Heidi, thank you, David. Any further discussion?
I'd also like to add that many of us that are sitting up here are here because of Melissa, either through polite pushing or just downright pushy, we're all here, many of us are here because of Melissa, and a lot of us have heard a thing for that, so, thank you.
All right, thanks, David. Any other discussion? All right, having heard none, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we have another resolution, this is regarding to appreciation for career and service of Chief Dan Labor, who is in the room with us. And for those that joined us on the 15th, it was actually very nice celebration to meet some of your family and everything, to get to know you a little bit more, even though you're departing in a few weeks, less than a week. Any comments there?
Thank you, Chief, I've had the pleasure of attending your party and met some of your family, and more time you get to spend with your granddaughter, and, you know, doing all those wonderful things on Monday nights instead of spending them here with us. So thank you again for setting our department out on the right foot, and your fantastic career serving residents all over the state previous to that, so thank you.
Chief, I'd just like to say thank you, please enjoy your retirement, golfing, fishing, whatever it is you're into, I hope you have a good time, and a long retirement, so thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
So.
We'll charge.
Yeah, okay. So, to the elected officials, these board members and past elected officials, you guys do a wonderful job, and it has been so great working with you and your support of law enforcement in this community, it's from my very first board, they made us cut our budget the second year, but after that, it's been going up, and you guys have done a wonderful job of supporting us, and you'll call us out when we need to improve, and you'll give us, you know, great comments when we're doing the right thing, so thank you so much for your support. Matt and Aaron, JJ, all you guys that I work with here, village employees, top-notch, Matt has always been a big supporter and really gave us the room to grow and the support to do so, all the new people, Gabe and Cameron have been fantastic, and Lisa, love you, you've got a great personality, thank you so much. The police officers, they don't get any better than Cottage Grove, they stay here for a reason, and it's because the community supports them, they love what they're doing, and they're really good at it, and we're always top six in safest communities in Wisconsin, it's because of the police officers that work here with us, for us, and great group of people, so thanks very much, appreciate it.
Did we already make the motion?
Can I make the motion? We didn't vote, oh, so we made the motion, but we didn't vote?
Yep.
This was the discussion, okay.
Yes, that was the discussion. All right, any other discussion?
We need a motion. We do need a motion. No, I said no. Okay, we need a motion, I move, I move that we approve the Resolution 22-22, 2022-23, the resolution to appreciate service for Daniel Labor.
Second. Thank you, Sarah, thank you, Chris. Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. And you're excused if you want to be. I know. I knew you would.
I'm recording the game anyway.
All right, there you go. We already had the swearing in, so we move on then to reports from village boards, commissions, committees, first up, police commission, I don't know if we have anything there? Dan was?
I think so, and police commission?
Police commission?
Yeah, the police commission, we did the, we extended the sergeant list for one year, there is one new officer left on that, so the police commission agreed to extend that for a year, there's nothing, we're doing recruitment, Mark, the new chief, was there, I think we had five applicants, we advanced, the police commission advanced four to the background process, we're now down to three, because the process sometimes reads people out, so we hopefully have two people that won't require an academy and one that will starting early January, if they all pass the applicant process.
Any questions? Thank you. Next then, utility commission, Chris.
Excuse me, we met on December 14th, we discussed and voted on forgiving $86,000 from TID 6, Cameron can go over that if anybody has any questions, I don't know, are you talking about that later? And then we talked about the 2023 budget for water and sewer, talked about the water and sewer capital improvement plan, we authorized Strand to begin designing a lift station for, I can't remember where that was.
The north side and southern?
Oh, right, right.
TID, yeah, for the Silver, for the Silver Property Group?
And then we authorized starting work with Trilogy Consulting on updating the water and sewer impact fees, and then as the commission, we voted to request help from the Madison Metropolitan Sewerage District to help us maintain our lift stations, sorry, and that was it for that, it was a long meeting at about 40 minutes, and that's it. Anything to add, JJ?
Just, I believe the intention was to bring that same mess in that sewage district issue to our village board, too, we sent it to them, and I spaced getting on this agenda, so I'll have that on the next agenda.
And we also talked about meeting at Village Hall going forward, for the.
All right. Thank you, Chris, thank you, JJ, thank you, Josh. Next then, we have plant commission, so we met on December 14th, covered a couple things, which we actually have a discuss and consider on the agenda, and we have some folks in the room actually patiently waiting for this to come up, so we held a public hearing for the application for Silver Property, and this is for development of approximately 70-acre light industrial parcel, this is B off, just off of N, north of the parcel that Amazon has closed their site. That was open and closed, the commission then had a discussion for the application for Silver Property Group for the approval of a development plan, which the plant commission supported, and give a chance to ask questions on that since we do have representatives from Silver Group. Then we went through a, again, this is under discuss and consider for the board, for the application for the village to do a CSM or certified survey map on a parcel in, off of Landmark Drive there, so that we can have a development there and then parse out another parcel, and so the bank along Highway N for that, and that was also supported by the commission, and that was it for the commission. So with that, we have Silver, I don't know, Aaron, if you want to kick it off, and then turn it over to our guests?
This is Chelsea from Silver, she's just gonna, we walked through the site plans, I think some of you haven't seen it yet, and then we can.
All right, thank you, Aaron.
Good evening, everybody, I'm just gonna try to get my technology to work. All right. Oh, not working? It's never gonna go smoothly the first time, right?
You were at the first one.
That's show business.
No, you won't. There it is.
There it is, wonderful. Alrighty, thank you, everybody, for your time this evening, and you know, over the last couple of weeks, we've had the opportunity to meet with plant commission and village staff and consultants to introduce our project, so we want to take this opportunity to provide the village board a little bit of an overview about Silver Property Group, as well as just introduce you all to the project, if you aren't familiar with it yet, and then obviously, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to address them, I've got a couple of folks here digitally as well, Adam Arts from Pinnacle and Chad Novis from Silver Property Group, so they're looming in the background, they'll unmute themselves when. They'll unmute themselves when, when they feel needed or such. So, we all know where we're at. Zilber Property Group is the commercial development and investment division of Zilber Limited, which is based in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. We, a unique component of Zilber Limited is that we're owned by the Zilber Family Foundation, which is a grant-making organization that focuses on philanthropic endeavors with various organizations in Milwaukee, but as well as the communities that we invest in throughout southeast Wisconsin. So, that's a little bit about Zilber. Zilber Property Group, we focus mostly on the development of industrial properties throughout southeast Wisconsin. So, we've got a portfolio that extends generally from Germantown on the north to Chicago Land in the south, a couple of residual properties elsewhere, and then the central, south-central corridor of Wisconsin, that's Janesville, and then hopefully your community here in Cottage Grove. The parcel that we're talking about for our project is located about a mile north of Highway N in 94. It's on the west side of Highway N. And currently, it's four parcels, so it would be an assemblage to create the 70-acre site. So, just immediately adjacent to I-94 for, attractive for logistics users and manufacturers, as well as employee attraction for, for users as well, we found to be a benefit. Also, it's on the, the northern edge of the, the village's boundaries within TID 10 and also kind of within that future zoned area, future planned area of industrial growth for the community as well. So, kind of a natural fit for the type of environment that we're looking to create. This is a site plan that's been provided as part of our general development plan submittal. So, here you'll see the, the overall planned development that we're proposing for the 70-acre site. You're gonna see Faber Road extending, sorry, I'm gonna point here and you guys can follow along. Faber Road extending from its current location and then along the southern edge of our property to service road and utilities to the proposed development, generally looking at about 700,000 square feet, spread out over between four and three buildings, depending on the type of market that we're seeing happen once we, once we get going. As it's, as it's proposed right now, we would do the construction of the road and utility infrastructure all the way to the western edge of the property and then build out the, the first two buildings, the smaller footprint, about 111,000 square feet each right now, generally designed to be as flexible as possible to accommodate a variety of industrial users as well. And this is the alternative site plan that shows a larger concept building for future development on the eastern edge of the parcel. And then this is generally, we just wanted to provide an example of the type of development that we've worked on, the type of projects that we've put up. We always look to develop Class A institutional quality facilities. So, anything that, you know, a major user would be interested in occupying here, you'll see the, the Silgan Containers of the World, Quad, Molson Coors are just a handful of the folks that we've been lucky enough to work with over the years and hopefully will be working with to attract to, to the site here in your community as well. So, with that, I'll just kind of thank you again for your time. And if there's any questions, please let us know and we'll provide as best answers we can.
Aaron, you want to start off the other piece of this meeting or some questions of the board too as well?
So, the staff report goes into a fair amount of detail on the consistency with the zoning and the comp plan. So, I won't go into all the details of that, but if you have questions, please ask. There are a few unique issues with the site that I'll, I'll touch on. As Chelsea mentioned, the use of existing Faber Road, which if you've driven past, kind of just looks like a driveway, but it is actually a town road. It serves one residence at the end of the road. So, we'll just want to make sure that that resident can still access their home all the way through construction and, you know, the developers are aware of that. That road also serves the farmland immediately to the north. The farmer uses that road to get his tractors up into the farmland. So, he's requested just a curb cut or something that he can still be able to get his equipment up in there and the developers are aware of that and happy to oblige that as well. The initial plan is that the Faber Road right-of-way would remain in the town. We spoke with Chairman Updike from the town of Sun Prairie and they're fine with, basically the developer builds the road, the village is responsible for maintaining it, and the town will just kind of allow that to proceed. And Rick's working on a agreement for making that official. The property owner to the north was also at the public hearing and had a few stormwater concerns that I think were addressed by the time the meeting was over. He was satisfied with that. And the Houston company owns the land to the west, kind of southwest. And you may recall during the Amazon approval, that one of their concerns was having that road connection that came through to their property. And they were also at the public hearing, expressed their satisfaction with this plan. So, we'd recommend approval with a few conditions. Again, as a reminder, this is a two-step approval. This is the more conceptual level. They'll be back again in January with the more detailed engineering and architectural plans. But the first condition, just kind of recording the exceptions that are driving this to be a planned unit development as opposed to just a regular site plan. The first is that they're requesting a maximum building height up to 60 feet, whereas the standard zoning district would allow 45. And then also looking for some exceptions on the setbacks, the way the buildings are oriented, they'd be sharing some of the loading zones. So, there would actually be no paved surface setback the way it's set up ordinarily. There would be one required in our zoning ordinance. The second one, we'll just want to make sure when we go through the more detailed landscaping plans at the next level, that the landscaping meets the buffer yard requirements where it's adjacent to the two residential properties that'll remain adjacent. We'll want to check on how the remaining undeveloped areas are permanently handled in the landscaping plans at the next level. Again, the developers are aware that there's a DNR water quality approval letter that was provided when this came into the urban service area back in October. And they are already meeting with a lot of the conditions that were in that letter, which basically involved meeting with the town, meeting with the adjacent property owners. Again, just a note, there's a traffic impact study that's kind of in progress. We're actually talking with the county again tomorrow with Josh's group to, you know, look at some of their considerations. So, there will be improvements in Highway N, turn lanes and things like that that are not reflected, that are not reflected in the GDP that we'll see at the next level when we've gone through those traffic studies and worked with the county a little bit more. We'll ask the developer to coordinate with the fire department. Chief Archibald did look at the initial plans and didn't really have any issues. Just wanted to make sure the typical considerations that their equipment can get through all the various turns and routes, which I don't think are going to be an issue. We'll want to give them a chance to check their radios and see if they'll need boosters when the buildings are built. And then we'll have the chief look at hydrant locations at that PIP level. Just a reminder, there will be impact fees due for industrial projects that's based on the number of employees. And then the developer will be responsible to reimburse the village for any connection fees with the sewer district. And then got Josh hiding in the back there, but he's got some conditions in his report as well.
Yeah, I think you covered some of them. Big one is traffic, right? And, and meeting with the county and, and getting the traffic impact analysis, which the development team's moving towards. Additional right-of-way along County Trunk Highway N. So, if you recall, the site to the south where, where the county was requiring some additional right-of-way to widen County Trunk Highway N at some point in the future, at least right-of-way wise, so that a major improvement could happen without having to take additional right-of-way in the future. Also, multi-use path was discussed at the Plan, Plan Commission meeting of making sure a multi-use path came up from the roundabout all the way to the north and then into this development to really tie all of this TID 10 back into the south, into the village. So, that was discussed with the development team. Stormwater, you know, there're gonna be some in that stormwater report with that PIP, so we'll get a good look at that. Aaron is right. We talked to, talked to several people on the stormwater side, landowners to the north and the county and township about the stormwater. And I, and I think the plan moving forward addresses all of those concerns, which is, which is good. One other thing we did talk about also was lighting and just making sure that it's kind of a dark sky compliance, making sure it's not overlit out there. And that will come forward in the PIP. Then lastly, the utilities. Aaron touched on this a little bit. Utilities, both water and sewer will likely have to come up N and into this development. And then they'll loop back around, so they'll, they'll, they'll go along the Faber Road as they, as they had shown it there in, in the site plan. They'll tie into the Houston property, but also tie into the development to the south. So, you'll have a big water loop, which is good for that system and the water out there. The sewer will all then drain to a regional lift station, will be pumped back up and over. You can envision when you go out there and up over N, this is up over the hill. So, the sewer kind of drains to the north and will have to pump it back to the south, up along N and back to what you would see essentially the roundabout by, by the gas station out there as part of the project. And those are things that the Utility Commission discussed and kind of approved moving forward with, so that these two projects kind of coincide and can happen at the same time. Chelsea, putting you on the spot a little bit, but if you could shed some light on kind of timeline and in an ideal world, that you guys are hoping to move forward with, you know, infrastructure and land disturbance and everything this year and just kind of go through that process and kind of general phasing, maybe?
Yeah, I would say, still on right, we're looking to, to break ground in 2023. So, all necessary approvals will obviously be received at that point. But phasing-wise, it would be the, the road and infrastructure utili, and utilities would be constructed, followed by the, the western side, the two 112,000 square foot facilities. And then, so that would, if timing and permitting is available, we would try to co-develop those at some point in 2023. And then Phase Two, is that my feedback? Phase Two would be the, the future facility. Got it. Phase Two would be that future facility or facilities that is shown on the eastern side of the project parcel. But generally, okay. But yeah, otherwise generally expedited timeline, not expedited, but, you know, to, to hit all of the development timeline for 2023.
Any questions, comments from board members for Chelsea in the room or her colleagues in the, on the Zoom?
I had a few questions. Josh, is that Faber or Faber Road? How'd you say that?
You know, the town pronounced it Faber, right? Did I say Faber? But I think.
I wasn't gonna correct anybody.
I think the town chair pronounced it.
It doesn't matter. I'm making a joke. Josh, the question I had was actually to you for the, I noticed in the report, it says the pump station would need an outlet or an outlot. Do we know which, like where along the?
We're, we're working on that right now and they are dedicating right now, at least in their plans, land that's really close up, up near Faber Road, close to, close to where the connection is, where they can provide an outlot or space for that station.
When I look at the drawing, is it that it says outlot to remain as is? Is that, or somewhere else?
It would, it would be in that, that's a larger, I don't know if you can pull that back up. That, that's quite a, a larger outlot that you aren't developing at this point. It's close to where the driveway is, where Faber Road comes in and connects to the driveway. It's kind of right in that area right now. That will, that will be pinned down a little bit closer here in this, in the PIP submittal. It's just kind of a placeholder at this point. But you can see that kind of blue, that blue pond, pond next to the connection up by Faber.
Yep.
It would be just north, right now where they're showing it would be just northwest of that, across Faber Road, near the driveway. So, there's kind of a, yep, there's a little triangle on the other side there that's not really used as part of anything that they're developing. You see that piece? Yep, right up in there. There's gotta be a driveway connection there, obviously to the new road. So, that driveway that's there now would have to connect into there. But there's also enough space in there for, for an outlot or a space for a lift station.
Was that discussed with the neighbor that lives right over in that area? It's kind of hard to see.
Yeah, I don't believe that, I don't know if the development team has discussed it all with the neighbor. We have not.
We haven't yet. I think the intent is probably get the design a little bit more progressed and then have the conversation so we know exactly where it's gonna, gonna be landing.
Second question I had, just for clarification, is it, so the town owns the road, but we manage it? So.
Clear that up. Yeah. So, Faber Road, it's a, you know, short little chunk of road. It's currently all within the town's jurisdiction. So, the town owns and manages it. Well, I don't know if they own it or if they have an easement, but the town, it's the town's responsibility at this point. So, the plan right now is to do a maintenance agreement with them. So, basically the village, no, remains a town road. The village will be responsible for all maintenance and moving forward with that. And that would allow Zilber to do the extension of Faber Road and relocate it to, in conformance with the plan. Ideally, the road would eventually come into the, the village's jurisdiction. So, there, the town had proposed doing a, a boundary plan as part of, making this part of a bigger boundary agreement. So, that is something that would also be part of future discussions. That's, I guess, the other piece to it.
Where, I guess where, maybe this is an Aaron question, like where is the village boundary? When I look at the, at the development plans, is it like?
I believe so.
The south side of the Faber Road. The town's been wanting to give us that road for quite a while.
Yes.
They don't want to maintain it.
So, the south end of Faber Road is the village boundary, but I guess I need to see a picture here.
The south right-of-way of.
Basically, the, the entire property that Zilber is, their, their whole property, the outline of it is the, on the northern end is the village boundary. But the road is, I guess, which part's the village and which part's the town? Because it feels like that, that part, I mean, there's a little chunk of it that's in the town, but the rest of it's the village, is? Everything that's, that, everything south of the line where the road show is not there today. So, that will be built. So, we're, so Rick, in terms of the, in terms of the boundary agreement, it's just that little, little piece?
Well, the villa, the town has proposed a more comprehensive boundary agreement. The maintenance agreement would just be for that little piece.
Okay. I catch on eventually. Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, it's discussing, consider.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application from Zilber Property Group for approval of a general development plan for the 70-acre light industrial development on parcels 0811-332-8501-1 and 0811-332-8072-1 and 80811-332-8182-1 at 4953 County Highway N.
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Thanks, Chelsea. And then next, then we also covered is the Plan Commission, the application for the village, for a village property on parcel 0711-041-2210-1. It's on 1565 Landmark Drive to basically break that up into two properties, one of which will develop bank and the other one will be vacant at this point. Any questions, comments regarding that or anything you want to add, Aaron, to that?
Not really. Basically, the village is the applicant. We're splitting it so we can sell it.
Yeah.
No, no conditions.
Any questions from board members?
Make a motion to approve the application from Village of Cottage Grove for approval of a Certified Survey Map to divide parcel 0711-041-2210-1 at 1565 Landmark Drive into two parcels.
Aaron, is there a second?
One second.
Chris, thank you. Any, any further discussion? Heidi, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. That was what we covered in Plan Commission. Next up then is Parks. Heidi?
Thanks, John. We had just one item on the agenda for this Parks meeting. As we had just approved the budget, it became, you know, official that we would move on to the final phase of the Bakken Park improvements, which include tennis courts. And in our last overall plan for the park, we had basketball courts planned. And through discussions that Sean has had, kind of at the county level with other different cities and villages, that, you know, what they're investing in, what they see as a strong demand. And what we see is a strong demand in Cottage Grove, especially for a destination-type park, would be instead of putting in the basketball courts at Bakken to do additional pickleball courts. So this would really open up opportunities to host larger, more regional events at Bakken Park for pickleball. There's a huge demand for that type of facility right now and pickleball's growing and it really serves a large group, age group of participants. Then we did just, you know, they're not even open yet, the four pickleball courts at community park, but that would allow for our community to have those pickleball courts, you know, not rented out to, you know, large regional events, that those would be available then for just members of the community. Of course Bakken would as well, but we wouldn't have that conflicting use. So I'm not sure if Blake is on, if you want to just go over the, kind of what it looks like. There'll also be a parking lot, which was in the original plans as well, because as we have more users, we have more parking. We did have, Kevin Loftenberg's on the fire department and he's on our Parks Committee as well. So he talked a little bit about how this will look for the festival. And we talked about one of the more northern fields that would be multi-use for youth soccer or flag football, could still be used for overflow parking. And then that would kind of preserve the turf for the other kind of four fields. So there's still the five fields that we'd have in that space as well. The reason why we wanted to get this on right away is so that we can finalize the bid documents so we can send this out to bid right away so we can have, hopefully, a lot of bidders with open schedules early in the season. And-
I'm here, I'm happy to share.
Okay.
I was need to take screen.
Thanks, Blake. Blake's from Parchitecture, is Parchitecture, right?
Yep, you got it.
Yep, and so Strand works with Blake and on Park Designs.
Any questions for Heidi on this or Blake or?
I have one question.
Sure.
I don't know if you can answer it or not, Heidi. I'm looking at the concept here. And at the tennis courts, is that, so does it change any of the painting for the tennis courts? Because it looks like right now maybe it's got some pickleball lines painted on there too?
Yep, so the tennis also had pickleball painted on. And I think the thought on that is if we have the eight pickleball courts and then we could have, is it eight more, Blake? Also on top of tennis, which would be-
Sixteen potential.
The largest then facility in this area. So we could have pretty large events if we had sixteen courts.
Heidi, I don't, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
I think you guys talked about this at Park Commission, but there was some discussion about, you know, the budget was set with the basketball courts being in there, right? And now we've kind of expanded or expanded that area, there's quite a bit more surface to put down for like that full pickleball court and set of stuff. And, you know, within the budget, there's more than what was budgeted for with this kind of new expansion. So there's still going to have to be a little bit of kind of design side of how much pickleball courts do you want? Do you want to come back and look at the tennis courts and maybe, do you want all four, right? Is there four in there now or do you want two to start and then add two later? You know, we just want to make sure we budget fit it for what was approved at the same time, moving to that pickleball court side. And I don't know how much discussion you had at the commission about that, but there's still a little give and take probably in the overall layout, at least the initial stage.
Yeah, we talked about, oh, go ahead, Blake.
Sorry, I interrupted. Josh, you're correct, we did talk about that. I think the strategy is going to be to, you know, keep checking the budget as we go through detailed design and then probably give ourselves several alternate bid items when we get to bid day. And so we might bid the pickleball in chunks of two so we could build four or six or eight. And that gives us some flexibility. Or we might look at the tennis, do we build three and with a fourth as an alternate? So we'll continually check as we go through. Yeah, the other item, I just want to go back to the pickleball real quick. So if there isn't demand for those extra four or extra eight overstripes on the tennis, then we wouldn't do it. And we want to kind of see how this facility grows in by bringing another eight into the community, that's quite a bit. But I guess I showed it on there as an option, if the community has that sense of growth, we do have the option.
I have one more thing, sorry if you already answered this. Are these pickleball and tennis courts, are they going to be lighted?
Yes, the planet, right?
Yeah, currently the plan is including lights on both. Thank you.
And our current, our current tennis courts at North Lawn, I don't believe have lights. So I just think that'll be a good addition, gets dark early.
Heidi, comparing the old master plan to the new one, can you comment on the number of parking spaces? Any difference? Add, add or remove or about the same?
We had asked about the total number now, but I don't think we asked about a comparison.
Yeah, so the current concept plan, as you hopefully are seeing on your screen, has about eighty stalls. And there is some room to adjust that. I think that this will tweak a little bit, but currently we can, we know we can get eighty M. The old plan, I did not count, but it's going to be awfully close to that. They had a drop-off zone down here, which I didn't quite understand, it's not dropping off or anything. So I'm guessing we may have actually picked up a few stalls from the old layout. The other thing I just wanted to point out, the old parking lot did not have direct connectivity with the soccer fields or the trail, whereas the new layout rotated it, you know, gets that penetration deeper into the park, right on the main north-south spine of the trail. So I think it actually gets much better connectivity with everything.
Do we, I'm just curious, this many pickleball courts, right? Like this could have the ability to attract tournaments and other things, do we think? And again, I'm a budding pickleball player and I don't think I'll be in any tournaments anytime soon, but I know they tend to attract a lot of people. Do we think this is enough parking for a tournament? And again, parking is always at a premium at Bakken, but, you know, like when I go to like Miracle League, you know, when Cole plays, like there's, you can never have enough parking out here. So I'm just curious if, as well as the residents, right, up the hill, right? Like-
Yeah, it's definitely going to take some coordination and I think scheduling, like we talked about with rugby in the last few meetings, wouldn't be a great idea to schedule a pickleball tournament, the same as, you know, one of the major rugby events. So it'll take some coordinating on our staff part if we, you know, host some of these larger events. And then there's also, you have the flag football or youth soccer that could be there too. So having a lot of uses in one park is fantastic, fantastic, but it does take, you know, a little-
For sure. I will say, I mean, I've had friends in other municipalities talk about, you know, Cottage Grove doesn't have a ton of softball fields. And I actually kind of like that we, you know, we're kind of going in a different direction, right? You go to Deerfield, Sun Prairie, Wanakee, Sun Prairie has multiple complexes, right? And I think this is kind of interesting that we're kind of going in a slightly different direction with pickleball and I think it's kind of cool. I would be interested to know, like, what's the next closest municipality? Not that anybody knows, but I just, I'm curious. This is a lot of pickleball and I think it's kind of neat.
Blake might have some stats on that. I think though, Sun Prairie is building, are they building twelve?
They have twelve now. We're actually doing the lighting for them, but yeah, they're maxed out at twelve. We just finished them in Florida last, this summer and they have eight. So you will be the champs by four if you, you know, wanted to overstripe the tennis. I want to circle back on the parking. The old plan showed seventy-two stalls, we're showing eighty, so there is a pickup there. And the other thing, I think we're going to be all right, unless you're, like you said, programming all the events, but you have all this new on-street parking plus the eighty dedicated here. I am pretty confident you're going to have adequate parking, unless you're overscheduling, but I know your fine park director would not do that.
No, I think that's, that's plenty, especially, and it's not just for pickleball, right? Like, I mean, like, I, again, for anybody who's ever gone to Miracle League, like that, it's a, parking is a tough thing. Well, they're moving to three nights a week, so this is a nice addition for sure.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, it's discuss and consider.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Bakken Park master plan update as proposed.
Thank you. Thank you, David, thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we have the Deer Grove EMS Commission. Brittany or Sarah?
All right, so we met on Thursday, the fifteenth, and things are going pretty much as expected. We did have higher call volume, I feel like we say that every month, but that is the case. And we did receive a first part of our payment for the DHS Flex grant that we received. We also approved an earned leave donation policy as part of that. We will be doing chief's review in January, so if anybody has any feedback you want Brittany or and or I to include in that, please let us know. And we will be starting to work on the Pleasant Springs and Town of Deerfield contracts next year, they expire in December of 2023. Brittany, did I miss anything or Chief Lang, you're online?
The new ambulance.
Oh, the new ambulance, yes, we got to see the new ambulance. Yes, thank you, Brittany.
A long awaited.
A long-awaited new ambulance.
Very long-awaited. Funny enough, those vehicles go, I told the town, this was out there, we got to repurpose the way today. So go ahead, it's only one.
All right, then we'll move on then to reports from village officers. Rick, anything on the legal front?
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you. Cameron on the finance front, you got a couple items here.
I'm not going to be as quick as the attorneys. Hopefully these go relatively quick. As part of the budget process, Gabe, if you want to open up the computer replacement memo I drafted, the board asked me to kind of, Austin Johnson Block, to go and compare some of the computer models, some of the pricing, kind of do an analysis and bring back to the board kind of what our 2023 computer replacement plan would be as approved as part of the ARPA budget. So with working with Larry, my recommendation to the board is to purchase the HP ProBook 455 G9 fifteen and a half inch with the AMD Ryzen processors. The vast majority of the reason is it's got, it's got the best, at least graded CPU mark, which is performance. It meets or exceeds our system requirements for key applications that we use as a village. And we do have some cost, we do have some cost savings, which allows us to address a lot of workstations that are kind of, need major updates. And when I kind of refer to our workstation, you know, docking station monitors, power cords and things like that. So I will toss it over to the board to discuss and consider. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments regarding this?
Cameron, what's been the feedback?
So, yep, so we've had five team members transition over to the model that is, that we're recommending here. And overall, you know, Lisa could probably speak to it the most. She had to flip back to her old Lenovo and the difference is crazy for, from a productivity standpoint. And when we're working with kind of our lean staff, you know, seconds matter. I know that kind of sounds lame, but when you're waiting stuff to load, eight to 10 seconds, every time you have to process either a certain transaction or certain process in the system, it adds up quite a bit. So overall, all very positive.
Lisa, any comments?
I'll just echo what Cameron said. When I had to transition just because of minor detail issue, I should say, I was like, oh, wow. I couldn't believe the difference. We call it the spitting circle of death in our office, so that is now back. And so I'm anxiously waiting for the repair.
Any other questions from board members?
I'll make a motion to approve the computer replacement plan as presented.
All right, thank you, David, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Then you have another item here, Cameron.
Yep, and one last thing with the IT. The board did ask us to come back with different server options as part of the approved budget. Larry and I are meeting as part of the fourth quarter, Larry, JJ, myself, and David are meeting as part of the fourth quarter update for IT services. That's one of the things that we're going to be discussing and in the future we'll be bringing forward. If anybody is interested in joining that meeting, it will be here at Village Hall from three to 4:30. More than, love to hear any feedback you guys have. I know that he just came here and presented, but if you wanted to either visit or send me an email about any additional feedback, you can certainly discuss it with him at that time.
Cameron, real quick, I do want to give you a shout out. You know, Cameron's still relatively new, but he jumped in both feet. And this is a lot of work that Cameron's put together and has done a lot of hard work. So really appreciate the effort and it's, I get to do this as a day job, so I kind of geek out on this stuff and Cameron, you know, kind of, I think he likes it, as best I can tell, but I really do appreciate the hard work. It means a lot. Thanks.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, and I can echo that as staff and as someone that isn't, and maybe every day I fall further behind on the, on the technology spectrum, but having someone on staff that enjoys it, that is knowledgeable and can help us be more of a partner with, a consultant is helpful. Otherwise, you know, without that, sometimes things can get kind of lost in a shuffle. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Onto the more fun things. So what Gabe has on the screen right now, and this shouldn't be, or this should be familiar for those who attended the TIF meeting this past year for the, at the Joint Review Board. This just is a display demonstrating how we know TIF is falling, TIF six is falling behind. It doesn't make it, it doesn't collect enough increment to pay its debt service payment. I was doing a little bit research and we've actually been levying for that portion of the debt since at least 2016. So from 2016 to 2011, we levied the debt service payments in the general fund. The general fund has been accumulating some fund balance to eventually forgive this inevitable write-off of funds. And then in 2022, the debt service fund started to levy funds and will carry that balance forward. So the memo that you see in front of you is really 2021 and prior. It's taking, understanding that this isn't a surprise, that it's not going to collect the increment enough or sufficient to pay back these funds for- or sufficient to pay back these, these funds for, for TIF-eligible projects. And then, one great question I had come at the Utility Commission meeting was, well, if TIF 9 overlaid, why doesn't TIF 9 pay for some of these projects? And unfortunately, we're not able to capture those project classes part of the TIF 9 project cost, that, that's considered an eligible expense. So at this point, this memo really just lays out the mechanics now here going forward, we're gonna continue to levy funds in the debt service fund to pay the remaining debt service payments, we will, with two possible extensions, have two years where we'll have increment being collected and no debt service payments, and if that, that's if the board decides to extend it three years, which we don't have to do anything on, and then an additional three years would have to be formally voted on, I believe by the Joint Review Board, but we would work with Ellers on that. And so then, at the end of the, the TIF's life, we'd come back, we, we've already levied funds again to forgive the debt, the debt service payments between 2022 and potentially 2032, and we'd forgive it formally again. Any questions?
Then I would make a motion to approve the forgiveness of advances for TID number six received from the general fund, 311,839, and debt service fund, 325,020.
Thank you, Heidi, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
That's all you got for me.
All right, thank you. Next up then, Communication and Muslim's Business, first up is, consider approval of vouchers, any questions, comments regarding the vouchers as presented?
I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers as presented.
All right, thank you, Sarah.
Second.
Thank you, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next up, Correspondence, I didn't have anything, is anybody else?
Nope.
All right, then, upcoming community events. Lots of time with family and friends, I hope, over the holidays, and maybe a little rest and relaxation for everyone. Then we'll move on to future agenda items. Matt, anything? Other than, we're gonna be on different time, different channel, right? Okay.
And then just to get the Utility Commission request to Madison Met on the next agenda.
Yes. Thank you, Chris. And we move right to item 11.
Make motion, Usher?
Second.
Non, non-debated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.